Okay, so let's go to the Commissioner's office. And I would like to start with the president.
Sean LaHone, Board of Selectmen. We've been on for a couple of minutes on Plymouth, so okay, but I'll leave that alone. So, here tonight, we're focused on one thing, $13,000 salary raise for commissioners. Four years ago, two of the three commissioners were left in, and a member of 12, they got sworn in in January of the year of 13. And at that point in time, they're at $7,500 a year. And four months in, obviously about four years ago, last month, there was a proposal about $7,500. The Plymouth Board of Selectmen was surprised at this. We had a discussion on it, it was unanimous that we felt it was inappropriate at that point in time, it was a little hasty. They should have been on their job for a year or two, let's see some positive results, and we can talk about the raise down the road. There was a difference of opinion. Our representative that night was a state rep, Muratori, who just left here a few minutes ago, and he obviously voted not in favor of that raise four years ago, by the past. We weren't surprised. So we saw this one come. Obviously, Commissioner Hanley and Polata re-elected in November of last year, sworn in, and we knew this was around the corner. So here it is. Shortly after, a year or so after they got the last raise, 19 jobs were lost at the Registry of Deeds, four by attrition and 15 by layoffs. To me, that's not a good thing. You have individuals at the Registry of Deeds, which is sustainable, and is the economic engine of this form of government, that have taken numerous furloughs over the last decade or so. There's been dozens of jobs lost. These individuals have gone without raises, and have taken on more of a burden of health care. The Plymouth Board of Selectmen unanimously believes that $15,000 a year to oversee a potentially $10.1 million budget with health care, and I believe all three of them are in the pension system, is more than adequate. If a form of government has $39,000 laying around, there are long-term liabilities to address, there are capital improvements to address, where you can reinvest it in restoration of jobs at the Registry of Deeds, or giving those employees a COLA, reducing their health care expenditure, what have you. So that's why I'm here tonight, representing the town of Plymouth. We do not agree on this $13,000 incremental raise. And Madam Chairwoman, this is the appropriate time, I'd like to make a motion accordingly.
You can do that first, and then continue with the session.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion, if this body approved the county budget, but with the salaries of the county commissioners staying at $15,000.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and I would now invite additional discussion of the salary line for the commissioners.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Steve Kennon, I'm a board of selectmen. I know it's going to be on camera. Nice place. Been on this committee, Commission.
Board.
Board, for eight of the past nine years. When I first came on, I was confused when I found out that those many years of unharbored budgets, I brought that up. Polata was here at the time, I told him what he already knew, and what any selectman already knows. Before you out-town people and say, oh, they're not going to audit the budgets for a few years, I would come to pitchforks and torches. So these folks did not get a raise for years, because those budgets weren't audited, the years weren't audited. It was a difficult time, it was a difficult time for these people, but they kept doing their job. And the real problem isn't giving them a few thousand dollars more each year. The real problem is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts taking 90%?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine percent of the Registry of Deeds money. And what do they do with it? Can you tell me that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is using every single dollar to the best of its advantage? I think not. Anybody who's driven a road in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts knows that. Anybody who's sat on the team knows that. These people have gone out, and they've got the Commonwealth to start paying the bills for the courthouses at times. And at one point, we were saying, hey, we'll just close the courthouses. That kind of got people's attention. But these people have been out there working every year to get more back to the county. They could do so much more if the state wasn't taking a lot of the money from the Registry of Deeds. We have an increase in budget, they're going to present... All of the years have been modern now, we're up to date. This is a phenomenal achievement, and I applaud all of them, especially the treasurer. This has been a tremendous battle, and they did it all. And they kept working, and they kept going. And I think they deserve this money. And it's small money, but they do a lot. They do more than a lot of us know, especially when you come in here the first time, you're sitting in here the first year, it's all, you don't understand what all this is. But when you're around for a little bit, you know what's going on. These people work very hard, they do a very good job. I recommend that you do not vote yes for this amendment, but you vote for the original budget. Support the original budget. These people deserve our support. Thank you.
We've been all these take turns going up. No, that's fine. The order doesn't matter.
I'm Lindsay Wilson, I'm chairman of the board here in Kingston. This is a contentious issue. I want to express the feelings and vote of the Board of Selectmen for Kingston, and frame the issue the way that we solve. This room in particular demonstrates what is at the root of this question, which is public service versus career. Everyone in here gives a tremendous amount of time to their community, because we believe in it and we want to make it better. We serve on, probably everyone's a selectman. I'm on four other committees in town, and give a lot of time to other things as well. And there's people who don't do government and still give a tremendous amount to their communities through coaching, through other things, because they believe in public service and being a part of their community. And I think that applies as well on the county level. There are people who are deployed full-time at the county level, that's their career, that's their vocation, and they ought to be compensated for it. There are people who volunteer their time for their county. And while some level of compensation is appropriate for anyone's effort, it's a matter of appropriateness. If you get to the point of benefits, if you get to the point of health insurance, you get to the point of a significant amount of money being proposed, and I understand that it had been there at one point in time, to me, it seems like it's going more in the direction of career versus public service. And I take nothing away from the amount of time that these people give and vote to our county, but everyone in these seats is out at meetings a couple of nights a week, probably. And we're doing it because this is our community, and this is our county. So I'm going to say, while Kingston would consider a modest increase, and an incremental increase perhaps, and, you know, as was done previously, measured results, I would not be supportive at $28,000.
Again, my name's Dan Sahlberg, I'm a vice chair of Board of Selectmen County. I'm a selectman, I'm in my 15th year. I've been a member of the Plymouth County for all those years. I can remember, about 10 years ago at least, when we were sitting in one of the old courtrooms in Plymouth, down below, behind the Commissioner's office. Time to hard, time to tough, we needed money, things weren't getting done. I don't think any of you were sitting on the board, and again, you were a selectman at the time, I don't know.
He was chair.
I was chair, I was out.
Well, that's right. Anyway, it's all I know is...
You'll never be Ellen. I know Ellen, she is, no Ellen.
We argued about what the commissioners accomplished at that time, I'm talking about 10 years ago. And we're in tough times. Troy and I made a motion that we were going to zero out the commissioners' line item because they weren't doing their job. But the least we could go, I think, was what, $7,000?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. That was the least we could go, according to Polata, right? So I made a motion, and it passed, because they weren't doing their job. And at the time, the stipulation was, you get caught up, you get the job done, you do what you have to do, and we'll reinstall what you were making. At the time, I think they were making $26,000?
Maybe then, $28,000.
Twenty-eight, around. So all we're doing is coming back and following what we said we were going to do 10 years ago, is once you brought the county back to where it was supposed to be, and you get the job done, one of the big issues was the audits. No audits were done. And, yeah, we'll do it, we'll do it, we'll do it, and years were by, they never got it done. And all of a sudden, boom, it's all done. Now, as far as thinking that, or said that, you have commissioners here that might be in their first term or whatever, think of a state rep or a state senator that gets elected for the first time. They're going to pay salary, and certainly more than $28,000 a year. So I mean, the time that they serve, they've been serving as a commissioner, as an elected official, I don't think it means anything, the fact that they're an elected official. And this is what we said that we were going to pay them, and we were paying them 10 years ago. And now that they've done the job that we've asked them to do, and even more, right? I think it's time that we follow what we said we were going to do 10 years ago, and reestablish their pay scale. So I would vote to not go with the vote that's on the floor now, and go with the original vote.
Everything Mr. Savucci said was absolutely correct. I was there for that vote, I was sitting next to you for that vote. I think I seconded that vote.
Probably did.
Probably did. And I remember vividly saying, you know, these guys, not new folks, these guys can't do their job. I remember the dire straits the county was in, there's at least one community here that benefited through the purchase of property at rock bottom pricing, because we had to sell property to maintain the budget. We were using one-time revenues to support, we had a big discussion about that, to support the operation. And the end goal wasn't just to have a budget, it was to, as trivial as it sounds, it was to keep the oldest surviving county in the United States alive, that's what it was at the time, at least that's what it was explained. But nevertheless, we did say, if you restore the services, you restore the fiscal strength, you get us to a point where we're comfortable, we'll give back the money to the commissioners. Now since then, everybody's changed, they've done a great job. I never thought we'd be in a place, in the place that we are today, where the county is actually surviving. I figure we move on to another commonwealth finally, right? I remember during our conversation, I raised my hand, one question I asked was, how do I annex Matt Polacek to Bristol County since we're on the board? And everybody laughed, but there was a lot of head shaking, saying, yeah, what's going to happen here? What's going to happen to the county? Are we going to go away? And we didn't. The leadership team that's been put before us, that we voted for, has done a really good job. Mr. O'Brien has done a phenomenal job as treasurer. He came down with Mr. Polata, not by choice, we didn't ask you to come down, but, well, we had them come down, and my, and my, somebody had to, right? So my board, I'm the only member of the board who's ever met a commissioner from the county. They had never seen the commissioner come down, or the treasurer come down, and have a conversation with him about the fiscal strength for the services provided. Now, two of my board members are probably two of the biggest naysayers when it comes to different efforts that we pay for, the regionalization efforts, but by the same token, they walked out of the meeting saying, I didn't realize that's what they did for us. What else do we have to do to support them? And the one thing I did say was to support the budget as presented, because I did make a commitment roughly 10 years ago, to reinstate that line. So I can say, on behalf of Tom Polacek, I would say that you defeat the amendment and support the budget as proposed.
Well, I'm Howard, I'm from the town of Enson. I'm also a water commissioner, as well as a selectman. These three members have been working here for the last 10 years, since I've been on the board. It surpasses the amount of work that the commissioners put before us. Tuesday night, we had a meeting, and my own board wouldn't go along with passing the budget for the commissioners. But that's after we got to discussing it, and I told them what they've done over the past 10 years. They came up with a compromise that maybe they can do it on three years instead of one year. Just do a third, the 18th, a third, 19th, and a third, 20th, which make it look a lot better. Plus it would increase their salary to the point where they were 10 years ago. And I would urge people to vote no on this motion, so that we can get through with the businesses of the town tonight. Thank you.
I'm Alex Bezantin from the town of Abington. I've only been on this board for two years, and I've worked a lot in two years, believe me. So I took it upon myself to do some research, and a lot of what I'm saying is already been said, but the high pay for the commissioners prior to '09 was $28,258.47. That's equivalent to $32,000 today. It was then cut to where it is now, at $15,000. The request before us is to bring the salary back to what it was, and what it should be. Not to $32,000 that, in reality, it should be, but just to $28,000. We're talking about $13,000 per commissioner, for a total of just under $40,000, for three people, not just one, but three, only $13,000 each. The current board of commissioners, along with the treasurer and deputy treasurer, has turned this county around from bankruptcy. And you talk about positive results, just look at the positive results of the last couple of years. We have a $10 million budget before us, and we're talking about $40,000. I urge you to vote the budget as presented. Thank you.
There's plenty of time for everybody.
Hey, I'm Howard, I'm a board of selectmen, and I wanted to make another proposal, an amendment, that's a lot of very, an amendment, but...
Why don't you talk about what you want to do, and I think we're going to, I don't want to get into amending amendments, if we can avoid that, I guess it's technical like you've never encountered. How do you tell us what your mind is?
Well, all right, similar to what Mr. Howard had said, I'd like to cut the pay raise in half, and install that in one-third amount, so over the course of the three years. Thank you. I'd like to make that amendment to the board.
What?
I'd like to make that, as informed amendment.
We have to go through the first one first.
Yeah, we'll have to vote the first, and then we can go to that against the other. So you would want to speak to this motion, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Mike Holland from the town of Rockland. I just, similar to the other folks here, I just wanted to speak in favor of the budget as it is currently. I mean, I think the budget as it is currently, really in my view, reflects a vision as where we want to go as a county. We want the county to be sustainable, in terms of the leadership that we have here in the county. When there are elections, we want to attract good, qualified people to run for those elections. And I think with respect to the three individuals that we have, who we have right now, that's who we do have. And I think going back to eight, 10 years ago, it was really a completely different cast of characters, I think with the exception of you, Mr. Polata. And I'd say, a cast of characters politely, but I think where we are today, we want the county to be sustainable, we want to attract, I mean, and I've seen in my work in government, whether it's been out of my experience on the Board of Selectmen in the town of Rock, in the town of Rockland, working for the city of Rockton, working at the State House, I mean, like I've seen each of the commissioners out and around, I've been doing today, you know, they're serving as commissioners, they're serving as outreach folks, they're serving as lobbyists, advocating on the, like, on behalf of the county's interests, up on Beacon Health on a regular basis, and they're doing the job. And, you know, as a volunteer, selecting, and I'm the first one, as many of us here, to take exception to the fact that, you know, there are people in different towns or other oppositions who aren't paid, and I often take exception to that, because we all do work so hard, we volunteer, we're out three or four nights a week away from our families. I'm here tonight away from my two young friends who are not even four months old yet, but, you know, but like in this case, they've obviously, over the past eight years, they've proven themselves, they have delivered a real value to the county and to each of our communities. And, you know, they're out there, they're out there all the time, and this really, in many cases, becomes like a full-time job, depending on what is happening during the year, what's happening at the State House. So I just wanted to speak in favor of them, the work they do, and the budget as it is right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Nata Parker, town of Rochester, Board of Selectmen. You follow parliamentary news for water, Roberts?
Well, the question is, I'm not part of the odds, but I believe we have to take a vote on the current motion.
Well, you can't take an amendment to that motion, you can't underwater through the water.
You know, I'm just looking at the... I don't see any harm in voting this first, and then looking at what's in there. But I don't, I'm not...
With water, I request the right to make an amendment, to do a motion.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a terminal executive.
Madam, thank you. So I understand the request of amendment, but it's seemingly unending, if we amend the original motion, then we amend the amendment. You can certainly make your own motion without harming your interests, so I would recommend we vote on the original motion, and then take up subsequent amendments.
Do you want to tell us what it is you're wanting to do?
I want to amend the motion for $15,000, to increase it to $19,250, which would be approximately a third of the proposed, and then, as the gentleman said, do a third, a third, a third, over the next three years, to bring them up to where they should be.
I do want to point out that this board cannot bind future...
Can't bind the future, relax, you can only do the motion for ten.
Right, and, you know, so just like, Tanya, how many years ago, eight years ago, or whatever it was, that the then-members, we heard from some of them who were still around, their intention was to restore down the road to the town to be the town, that also is not binding on us. So I'm not going to take an amendment to the amendment, and if somebody wants to sue me later, then the county can deal with that.
I believe also, I think that has to water it, and that should, and also, normally you don't take one member, one actual piece, and then take a member off, and that will be the vote, and that's, it's under your control.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Holland, I'm from Lakeville, and I'm going to give you the opinion of the Board of Selectmen in Lakeville. Similar to what Ellen just mentioned, we do not believe that we are bound by decisions of past boards. In that regard, Lakeville had a four-hour budget discussion on one line item at a town meeting on Monday night. So we are a very fiscally conservative community. And what we believe, as we do with a lot of our new employees, when we post a job offering, which has a set salary range, we don't expect our employees or our new employees to come in and try to negotiate that salary after they've been brought into the position. As an elected position, we all know what our compensation is. There is a body by which we can increase it, which is this body, but the town of Lakeville does not believe that when there's an elected position and there is a set compensation level, that that should be changed at this time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Sullivan, I'm the city council president of the city of Rockton. I've been a councilor large in the city of Rockton for 12 years, and I've sat on the advisory board for over 10 years. I'm going to ask, show of hands, who was here that night? Because I was here. And as you recall, we didn't want to be here, because the commissioners hated each other, it was unprofessional, and it was quite honestly painful to be here. It was. You know, it might not be binding, I'm the attorney myself, it might not be binding, but a promise is a promise, you have to adhere to a promise that was made in good faith. Now, at that time, the vote was made because those people in that job were not doing the adequate job, they just weren't doing it. So we cut it to the bare minimum. Now, the fact is, the revenues right now speak for themselves, and these three individuals are representing 27 communities that make up Plymouth County. I serve one community, the city of Rockton, I get paid 10 grand. I'm out every night, they could be out every night. I mean, I think you just have to do the right thing. So I'm here tonight just as one member saying that I don't support the motion on the floor, I support the budget as presented. Thank you.
If everybody doesn't mind, let's sit from here, I'm still recovering from spine surgery. Back probably a month and a half ago, my town administrator called me and says, Alan, what's going on with Plymouth County? And I said, what are you talking about? Well, I've got a letter here from Plymouth, the town manager, alerting us that we should vote against the budget. And I said, I don't know what you're talking about. So I read the letter, I was kind of more than disappointed, I didn't think it was proper, actually, the way it was done. And I don't know about anybody else, but if someone tells me something, I look at like 80 different directions first, and a lot of homework, make sure I know what's going on. Because everybody, and we all do it every day, someone comes and complains to us, they're not really telling us what the real truth is, there's something else way behind it, that has a different agenda, a different reason. And a lot of times, it's something that really isn't, you know, legitimate, except... So I spent some time, found out what the gentleman here talked about, about decreasing the salary, with the promise that would come back when it was profitable. My board is as tight as any board right now, because all of us, you know, at any time, we can be underwater financially, we got no idea what the state's going to do, because there's no set budget, federal government's not going to budget until November. If Massachusetts, as a state, which we just, a couple of days ago, if they change the health care program, Massachusetts can be looking at $750 million to $1 billion shortfall in health care, and that's going to come out, everything else sits there. So none of us should be saying they're very comfortably being stable. But at the same time, this was made as a promise, the money is here as far as it could go with this. And my board, basically, I explained what it was, we went through it back and forth, and they all agreed to basically support the budget as presented, because they felt that these people, and actually, for the first time in their history, someone actually did a pay increase. When we have union of employees outside of town, and we ask for some kind of, you know, compromise or whatever, they sacrificed their, yeah, they didn't give back any. So at this particular point here, to me, ethically, morally, a group of commissioners, no matter who they were, and who they are today, made an agreement to go ahead and take the pay back to basically support, and have this particular county survive, with the idea that they would get the money back sometime in the future, I think that should be our idea. I think it's ethically, morally, the correct thing to do.
I'm Helen from the town of Cawker, as you know. Mine, I'm also representing the town of Cawker, a board of selectmen. They left me holding the bag. They said, all right, Mom, we won't make a decision tonight, we're going to let you hear everyone tonight, and we're going to allow you to make the decision on our behalf, but you know what direction we want to go in. I'm only, what, 1.59% of the vote, so it doesn't mean a lot, but I can say with conviction, these guys have worked really hard. However, I'm a fiscal conservative, and I've been very honest with these guys, seeing what they've done... what they've done with cleaning up the audits when I first became a selectman, we were still in kind of a mess, and they've worked diligently, working very hard hours, and hearing about the average salaries of commissioners over the state. But because I'm a fiscal conservative, I ask the questions about the registry of deeds, I'm still not totally convinced about the registry of deeds increases. But I do say that these guys, our Plymouth County Commissioners, we were on the brink of losing our county in the first place, but I do say that we still have to be prudent. These guys deserve to be compensated, but I do think that we should do it incrementally. Over the past three years, I think you'll have more support for it. Thank you.
Before you go, Mike, you just, you mentioned the comparison to what commissioners make in other counties, and you don't need to stay up here, I just, because you mentioned that, I did ask Frank Basler, the county administrator, to prepare something that would let us see where our commissioners are compensated relative to other county commissioners. So it just seemed like a good segue to have that handed out now. And then, once that's passed around, if you could just explain how you went about doing it, because counties are not as apples-to-apples, you know, state elected officials are.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Can you just wait long enough for one of the others, I'm here to explain.
Thank you.
So Chairman Allen asked me to look at the comps for, around the Commonwealth, for the commissioner's salaries. And what we did was, what I did was, you know, this is a way to not look at things in a vacuum. So to me, assessing value involves looking not only at what's being done, but what others are paid for it, just like you would in a real estate or other endeavor. So this work here is two, one graph with the axis on the left with the dollar amount. The first grouping is the commissioner's salary alone. So you can see from Barnstable, the first column, they actually are approximately the same as the Plymouth County Commissioners are right now, which is fifteen thousand. We then go to Bristol, in the thirty-four thousand dollar range, and then the actual Norfolk is forty-three thousand dollars. Plymouth County right now, Commissioners earn fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. The green column is what is requested in the full budget as of now, which is twenty-eight thousand. But then I said, there's another story here, and the other story is all of the key leadership salaries, because the commissioners here take a very active role in day-to-day, working with me, giving me direction and making sure that the team is doing what they should be and properly focused. I said, so what happens if you look at the leadership team of all the counties? And when I did the analysis, it comes in on the graph on the right. So on the graph on the right is the commissioner's salary and the administrator's salary, and then the advisory board salary, or in Barnstable, it's the legislative assembly salary. So in Barnstable, they have a little bit different charter, they have fifteen instead of the twenty-seven, and they each make one thousand dollars each, plus each of those members receive full healthcare benefits. So this is only a representation of the actual salaries. Even with the full restoration to twenty-eight thousand, Plymouth County would have the lowest commissioner and administrative costs out of all the counties that exist today. I did take out Nantucket County and Dukes County, they are real counties like Plymouth, but because they're townships in small areas of the islands, they act differently. The selectmen actually hold both roles, as county commissioners and selectmen. Through you, Madam Chair, your questions, or?
Yeah, I just, I'd ask Frank to prepare something that would give us some context for what this position pays in other places, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Mike Bradley, Marchfield, Chair of Board of Selectmen, Vice Chair this morning. So the first time I heard about the increase in salaries, I received a couple calls from from those selectmen somewhere, in support somewhere, not so nice. I did the research on it, as most of you have heard today, that about ten years ago was a horrible, horrible situation in the county. I wasn't in office at that time, but I took the information, I looked at it, I spoke to some of the people that were, and they said it was so bad, they had never in the past even considered reducing the salary, basically, to zero, but they couldn't do it, because the statute wouldn't allow them to do. So I know that we can't be bound, we can't bind future boards that come here, so what we're really here to talk about is to deserve the salary increase as proposed, and I whole heartedly support it. I am one town, I represent one town, Nantucket, and like most of you, I'm busting my butt trying to get it done, they represent twenty-seven communities. And I think it's only fair to pay them what they're worth, what we're asking for, what's proposed, or what they've asked for, I believe is completely fair and reasonable, given the fact that they're doing twenty-seven times the work that I am. In addition to that, what do we say if we don't want to pay the county commissioners what I think is a fair and reasonable wage? We say to people that are thinking about running for this office, forget it, you're only gonna get seventy-five hundred bucks, or fourteen, five, or fifteen grand, or whatever it is, and you're really pushing people away from running for county office that can't fully commit or donate all the time. I can't donate all my time, I have a sole practice, I need to work, I try to balance it, I think the commissioners here are trying to do that well, they all have family. So if you don't increase the salary to at least, and I didn't say increase, to restore it to where it was at a horrible time in this community, you're really saying to them, you have not done the job, you're not getting the job done that was done in two thousand eight. It's just ridiculous, two thousand eight, in that range, it wasn't done. Now, we have a surplus, it is being done, and if you don't pay them, you're really not gonna get a greater, broader, diverse group of candidates in the future. I'd ask you to defeat the amendment, vote the budget as is.
Can you also read that? Did you want to share that?
Oh, excuse me, I'll read it. I forgot that. Thank you, Madam Chair. Somebody, I was finishing here, is that?
Can you be on mic or mic?
Yeah, sure. I received, I received a note from George Noel, a business manager for OPEIU Local Six. Asked me to read it, it states that the OPEIU Local Six, the sole bargaining agent for the employees at the Plymouth County registered, wholeheartedly supporting the increase in stipend for the Plymouth County Commissioner, signed, George Noel.
Just thought people might want to know now. Mary?
Good evening, Mary Kaufman. Hang on, I'm not gonna repeat what's already said. Our board, we were asked not to vote coming into this, we honored that. We did have some discussion, and I would say that the tenor of our conversation was very much like what was talked about in Kingston. I would just bring up one point that we talked about that hasn't been brought up this evening. You know, there's been a lot of focus on restoring, and, you know, there are different points of view on that. Some people feel like that was a promise that was made, others perhaps feel like, you know, as one town meeting can't bind another, so one advisory board. But one thing that our Board of Selectmen talked about was the message of an eighty-five percent pay increase in one year to the commissioners, and what message that would be sending to all the very hard-working people in Plymouth County, to members of the registry of deeds. And, you know, we even heard tonight that, you know, when the county and the commissioners have done a very good job with this, we're asking people to do more with less, we're asking them to be creative, we're asking them to take on new responsibilities. And as we're starting to emerge to be on stronger financial footing, you know, I don't know that the people that work in the registry of deeds or anywhere else in Plymouth County are gonna say to themselves, well, you know, ten years ago, the commissioners were making this much, and we should restore it. Our board thought that they would think, wow, an eighty-five percent increase for the folks in charge, and that was difficult for us. I'd make one other point, too, because procedurally, what I understand is we're gonna be voting on this amendment first, so I might just ask that before it comes time to vote, we could be really clear on sort of what we're voting, because I think there are a couple of ideas circulating around in the room, and we just all want to be clear on, you know, sort of where we are in the process. Thank you.
Yes. Seems that, do you have something new and different?
Absolutely.
Okay, then I'm gonna get a vote on this question.
Yes, it's really not about the money, and it should not be about the money. It's not about the money to any one of you advisory board members. We all serve in our communities, I get paid zero, a lot of you get paid zero, some of you get three or four thousand dollars, it's not about the money. And it's really not about the money to them, and I think they'll say that. Whether we approve the fifteen thousand, whether it's twenty thousand or the twenty-eight thousand as proposed, I mean, their life isn't gonna change because of that. But yes, we should compensate them for what they do and what perhaps they're worth and so forth, and the work that they do. But I was at that meeting ten years ago, when I was the Assistant Treasurer at that time. As a matter of fact, the Assistant Treasurer's position was even on the line that night, where a commissioner wanted to do away with that. And maybe even some of you were in favor of that, but it never really came to vote. Those were really dark times, really dark times. Yes, there have been some financial improvements with the county, and I think that there have been a lot of increases in some of the ungraded positions tonight, some good increases, and justifiably so. Do the commissioners deserve some sort of an increase? Perhaps. But I don't, I do think going from fifteen to twenty-eight is probably a little bit too much at this time. I would be in favor, certainly, of an amendment that has been proposed by a couple of my colleagues here, therefore, I'll probably support the amendment in hopes that we come back with another amendment to give them an increase, as we have to a lot of the other ungraded positions.
Okay. I think it would work a little differently than that. So first of all, we're gonna take a vote on the motion, and I think there's a point of clarification. The current salaries of the commissioners is not fifteen thousand even. It's fifteen thousand one fifty, or one?
Yes, one fifty.
Fifteen thousand one fifty. Can you read back the motion that Mr. Malone from Plymouth made, Nancy? Because I don't know if he said to reduce the proposal by thirteen thousand each, which would change it to fifteen thousand even, or if he stated it differently.
I'll add in my motion, another reduced by twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Then how can you do that?
Yeah, no, we're gonna have to vote, we're gonna have to vote the motion.
He's the original, he made the original amendment.
Is that a? You want it accurate, Alan, or we leave it at fifteen, whatever you want.
Since he made the original amendment, you can entertain his.
He can withdraw it.
To withdraw, and I guess make his amendment to reflect the actual salary.
But how do you, is he worth it to keep it as is?
Approve the budget, but keep the commissioner's salaries the same at fifteen thousand.
Okay, so there's no need for that. Okay, so what we're gonna take a vote on is whether to keep the commissioner's salaries at their current level of fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So if you think it should be anything higher than that, be it what's proposed, or something in between, because we have several people who've expressed the idea of doing something but not no increase, so, okay, one more? Only because choice is right, you know what I mean?
I've sat here for the past twenty-seven years, just kind of like for my tenth term in Albatros, and I was the point, I first kind of liked to select, but nobody else wants to count to five to vote here. I said in that through several meetings prior to the meeting, people come through, the audit, we had hired an individual to do the audit from the county and the commissioners as well, we go through the advisory board, fired that individual, so they're gonna get it done. The night in question, they were cutting the salaries in treasurer's office, planning to get rid of the assistant treasurer's office, they cut the salaries in the registry, every place but themselves, they didn't feel the pain. The reason that we decided, in Actus One, it presented the proposal, along with my padre here, to cut the salaries to zero, and we were told that seventy-five hundred was the lowest, that we could go. Now, I'm friends with everybody sitting in their corner over there, and I know several of the selectmen in town, known for years, but it's not about the money that I'm talking about, it's about rewarding an individual for doing something that nobody else had done for the last twenty years. And that's to get the county back on a level, because if you remember straight, there was legislation sent down from the state to vote whether we should do it or not. There's no good economic time to give raises to anyone. There's no certain good time, we can't predict the future, we don't know if these three people are still gonna be in office over the next few years. But the fact is that, that night, we asked that we take the salary, wait until seventy-five hundred, and should things improve budgetary-wise or anything, we no longer sell property to keep our budget stable. We no longer have to spend money on lawyers because of lawsuits, because commissioners who are inactive, and I don't know what they're supposed to. I mean, those are valuable things to have. You know, I would think that you, there are some of you who've just been elected, some of you who've been over a couple weeks. Now, I'm gonna tell you, my board members felt the same way, but you know what they said? They said that, I'm not too comfortable with the raises, but what do the county commissioners do? You know, and I think, I think that's the key to the whole situation, if you don't understand what is being done, because I have the same course of answer for me, what do you do as a selectman? I've got that everything, picked up trash off the street, but not everybody sees that, no, everybody knows that. I belong to five committees, but my foot is down at the Albatros. My point is, is that we reward individuals, there are people who work for the state, work for the place, automatically get increases, and they never show up to work. There are people that do show up to work, don't do anything when they hit there. We have individuals who have other jobs and other things to do, they put the time and effort in, that they just counted one of the strongest ones going through all that in payments. I support the fact that we should vote for the original budget, please, the fact that the people have performed and done their jobs, and they didn't cause the money to be cut in the first place, they weren't even in office at those steps. So that's not, that reward doesn't do a good job.
Okay, so I'm gonna close off the debate on this amendment. As you'll recall from my opening slideshow, it isn't one town, one vote, so we can't just raise hands and do it that simply. It has to be, it's based on our, our communities' assessed real estate value relative to the total assessed value of the county. So everyone has their little percentage, you may know what yours is. So the first thing I'd like to ask is, what percentage of the county is actually representative here?
Ninety-one point three two.
That's gotta be directors, so thanks to all for coming. So that means you would need what for a majority? Forty-five points?
Forty-six.
Well, I'm not, sound like.
Forty-five point six seven, if that's.
Forty-five point six seven, okay. So I'm gonna do a roll call, and I believe you have a spreadsheet that, oh, you have a spreadsheet that you're gonna put up, that's gonna keep a tally as we go, so we know, am I right, this is how you've got available for us to do?
Alan, if you want to say when a yes vote is and when a no vote is.
Yeah, I'll look into that, I just want to explain the procedure first, why I'm not just having to keep raising hands.
It just takes a second to come up.
Yeah, so Jeb Welch, our Deputy Treasurer, has created a spreadsheet, and he will input each vote, so that we see a running total of where we stand. So as soon as that's ready. Okay, so again, a yes vote, a yes vote means you want to free the commissioner's salaries where they are. where they are. And if that passes, we will be done with this budget line. So a yes vote keys it exactly where it is today. A no vote means we then entertain something else as the salary amount for the commissioners. Okay? So a no vote leaves it up in the air. A yes vote leaves it level exactly where it is. Is everybody clear on that vote?
No vote.
Your amendment is to keep them flat with where they are with fiscal '17.
If I fall, wouldn't that appropriate $28,000 if it was a no vote?
No. Or is it a vote on the amendment?
You have to go back to the original one.
Okay. Abington?
No.
Bridgewater?
Yes.
Brockton?
No.
Harbor? No. Duxbury? They caught up?
No.
Carver? Carver was?
No.
Duxbury?
Yes.
Is East Bridgewater here? No. Halifax?
No.
Hanover?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Hainault?
Yes.
Hull? Not present. Kingston?
Yes.
Lakeville?
Yes.
Marion? Not here. Marshfield?
No.
Matipoiset?
No.
Middleboro?
No.
I'm gonna vote last. Pembroke?
Yes.
Plymouth?
Yes.
Plimpton?
No.
Rochester? I'm sorry. Have we gotten yet? Is it all set?
Okay, Plimpton?
Plimpton was?
No.
Rochester?
No.
Rockland?
No.
Situlit?
Yes.
Wareham?
No.
West Bridgewater? Not here. Whitman?
No.
And Norwell is voting no on the amendment. So what is our result?
45.25 in affirmative, 46.07 in negative.
Say that again, please?
Just go down to the bottom, Jeff, I see.
Yeah, the amendment fails.
Okay, so the amendment fails pass?
Yes.
So we are now back reading. So the proposal to have no raise for the commissioners has failed. So we now move back to what we're going to pay them. I will take a motion either on the existing budget or on an alternative.
Madam Chairman?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we set the commissioner's salary at $20,000 for fiscal '17.
$20,000.
Fiscal, each $20,000. Fiscal 18.
Okay, so that would be an increase of $4,850 for each of them. So I have a motion in second. You have the who've made the motion in second. Do you remember? Okay. Is there any discussion on the proposal to increase the salaries to 20,000 each? Yes.
Brian Bartholomew, Town and Hanover. I moved into Plymouth County 18 years ago. I moved from an area in the state where the county government was eliminated. And when I moved here, I was full endorsement to eliminate all county government in the state. Since I got involved in Hanover town government, served on the advisory committee for seven years, passed four and a half years on the Hanover Board of Selectmen. And, you know, I think we need to stop playing games here with these numbers. I, like you, when I heard that increase, I said, I can't, in good conscience, vote that increase. But as I looked at the history and actually looked at the article in Patriot Ledger that talked about what this, you know, people that served on this advisory committee voted, you know, let's do the right thing. Let's do the right thing. The level of service that you're getting from the county government is much better than when I moved to Hanover 18 years ago. The service that we've been getting in Hanover, with the services from the county government, has been very high. So look at the level of service that you're getting. You're getting hung up in whether we should give them $5,000 this year or $5,000 next year. Pay them what it's worth, what the job is worth, and the level of service that we're getting. Because if you're not, the reason why you brought it down before is because the people in that job were not doing the job, and you brought it down. So let's put it back where it belongs.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Just one. We are sitting here, and let me ask a question. Who does it hurt that we give them the $28,000 out of the air? Doesn't hurt towns, but not the other employees because they're their creatures. Doesn't hurt the budget. Why not? I'd move that we give them the $28,000 and restore it because I'd like to keep my word, and I know a lot of people have that because they want the other, but in fact, it's important. I've served on this board a very long time, and I just like to believe that we have a group of individuals who care about the constituents. And if it was hurting my town, hurting the residents of the towns, with these people's money, I would not vote with this. But it's not doing that. So we need to look at the whole picture.
Yeah. One thought that we want to keep in mind, if 10 years ago, or whatever time, if the commissioners then were doing their job, they would have been making the amount of money that, we wouldn't have been here today discussing this. They would be making the 28,000. The fact that they weren't doing their job is why we punish them for not doing their job. What I'm saying, if in fact, that board, or the board of commissioners, was doing their job, they'd be much higher than what they're asking for today. Because they would have been at that 10 years ago, and over the years, they might have been increased on a yearly basis. So think about it. You know, maybe if in fact we didn't do that, they'd be looking at 35,000 each piece. Over 10 years, getting the small raise every year. And they go 3% or 2% raise on a yearly basis. So I think by restoring what they would have had 10 years ago is we flattened out their rates, because they're not getting raised. They're getting a raise because we took the money away from them. Not them, but the positions at the time. It's the only reason why we're here today. We took their money away. Now we're restoring it. If we never did that in the beginning, we wouldn't have this discussion.
I just want to say, it's not their money. It's the people's money. So let's just be clear about that to start. I didn't, I wasn't here 10 years ago to hear that promise. And I appreciate people of the center. So I completely respect that position. But, you know, we, the selectmen in Kingston, manage a $46 million a year budget. We get 800 bucks for it. It's kind of nice, pays for your sons if you run and what have you. But it's not why we do it. It's not why you do it. A lot of people get nothing. My understanding is that the commissioners also have jobs and that there's full-time staff. There's a difference between the two. Just because a position was paid something at one point, doesn't mean you're entitled to it for life. So, you know, I don't know what the motivation is. If I am a commissioner, I want to come forward and incrementally ask for your support. I mean, to go from the 15 to the 28 in one request, just to me, what message are you sending to the communities that you serve? This is public service. So I would certainly support a modest increase. But I hope that the commissioners don't feel entitled or that it's their money.
Is that chill? Matt?
Okay, and then I'm gonna let the questions go.
I appreciate the fact that it is the people's money for that 28 grand. The work they've done over the past 10 years, it's well worth 28 grand. People are getting good value for their dollar, 28 grand. Thank you.
I sat back for a couple hours here, listened to the back and forth. I can be honest with you, I was selecting for six years, and I sat in those chairs, and I probably would have been a no vote. I sat in Ellen's chair for four years. It was I that cut the salaries. I made the recommendation. The executive board went along with it. We tried to get it to zero. It was the state statutes brought to us who prevented it. We made a promise that it would go back. The selectmen from Lakeville said, you know what the salary is when you run for office? I know what the salary was. It was $28,000, and it was a promise. I ran because I thought I could get the county fixed in a year. It took me four years, and this is the last piece. During those four years, we eliminated 1.2 structural deficit on a $10 million budget. We eliminated through state legislation, which is endless number of meetings up at the State House, as indicated by the gentleman from Rockland. The elimination of a maintenance of effort payment that you were paying for a jail that you didn't own, that the state took. And by the way, during that same nine-year period, the state's, the jail budget's gone up 35%, and the county's budget's gone down 2%. Stabilization fund. I got here, but you never have a stabilization fund. We're not allowed to by law. We had to spend it. That 700,000 we just talked about, we would have spent that two years ago. We would have hired people at the registry, laid people off at the registry. A cycle that had gone on and on and on, because we were not allowed to save it. It took us four years to get the legislature to allow us to have a savings account. Since we've established the savings account, we've put money in it each of the two years. We've corrected the problem with courthouse rent. And Mr. McKinnon, you're right. That was the best meeting I ever went to, when we zeroed out the courthouse and the chief justice of the court system came running down here. You can't zero out your budget. What are you gonna do?
We're gonna add a lot to courthouse.
You're not paying your bills. We restored it a week before the fiscal year started, and they've been paying on time ever since. We started Peacock. And as we started Peacock, we looked at our own OPEB problem, and as we indicated, we've reduced it by $19 million. We established a website. Probably the last governmental entity on the planet to have a website. Nobody knew where we were, how to contact us. It was archaic. We have labor contracts with all our unions for the first time in a decade. We've sold 1,350 cars. We provide assistance to your housing authorities that are independent of your towns. We do their gas reports. We buy bulk appliances for them. We buy bulk ice melt for them. We go to dredge from the state. We hope it gets used. It was controversial when we got it. We're trying to get it used, not only for the coast, but for the ponds. Most of our towns have torn problems, weeds. The dredge is available. And then we get to infrastructure. I'm a builder. I'm actually an OPM. And I found it interesting, talking about time and the commissioners. I've missed many OPM opportunities because I'm a commissioner. Can't bid on this town because I have conflict. Couldn't bid on that town because I was up at the State House. This job takes a lot out of all three of us. It's not like being a good selectman. I was a selectman for six years. I've done town government, like Brian, for 25 years. At zero pay. This isn't about pay. The county buildings, as an OPEB, as an OPM, are deplorable. Four years, although when I got here, there was no maintenance. We've spent a million five on maintenance. It took us four years to weed out the bad employees, keep them, the good employees, set up infrastructure programs, and begin the process of energy conservation in every building. We've completed half of the Hingham District Courthouse. We've completed ADA requirements in the Whiteman Courthouse. And we've completed a complete study of the Brockton Superior Courthouse. During that period, we met at least three dozen times with CJM, the Chief Justice of Administration and Maintenance of Courts. Because of our consistent lining in the other counties, this 47 county courthouses out of 150 courthouses in the state of Massachusetts, 47 were owned by counties. You own three of them. No maintenance has been done since 1978, when the county was no longer allowed to administer the courthouses and the court employees. They were taken and given to the state. We were successful in getting all three of our courthouses in Phase 1A of the new courthouse rebuilding program, a $3.2 billion program. And the first phase is $565 million, which is going to be voted in this fiscal year. All three of our courthouses are getting $15 to $25 million upgrades. That's your courthouses. And that is something the commissioners worked on. The registry of deeds, your brand-new registry of deeds, you voted on the mortgage payment, your bond payment, just recently. The registry of deeds lost its brand-new child. It's only seven years old, eight years old, nine years old, whatever. 20 years before it should have, because it wasn't maintained. The county commissioners found a later replacement. Cooperative extension serves 800 children right now. And every single community that you have, on its meager scaffold of four, it had 27 employees 25 years ago. We don't need 27 employees. We're doing the best we can with four. Cell towers. Did you know you own two cell towers? Bet you didn't know. Because when we got here, I asked where the rents were. No one had collected rents in cell towers. I guess, well, we own two of them. And it's been corrected. You now get $37,000 a year for your cell towers. You also get $33,000 a year for Mantis G. Because if Pilgrim decides to have a burp, and they have to remotely control it, the control room is underneath the county administrator's office. There's a backup control room in our building, and that's why that building was built. We've done a lot, and I would appreciate it if you recognized what we've done, not for us, but for the Office of County Commissioner. Because the county will come back. It's gonna come back even five grade up than what we've done. What we've done is put the diorama. Somebody else is gonna carry the water further. Because the town of Plymouth can't make it on its own. The town of Lakeville can't make it on its own. I know Hainault and Norwell can't make it on its own. Hainault's already started a regional initiative with their 911 center. Duxbury also started a regional initiative with a 911 center. All those things would have been done county-wide, because we got a grant to do it 10 years ago, but the county commissioners never followed through. Those are things that should be done by the county. And there's a whole list more. I want to thank you for your time, and I want to thank you for your spirit of the debate. And I want to thank the town of Plymouth for sending that letter, because it brought the county forward. You've had a wonderful debate tonight. It's awesome. And I'm really excited about it, because now you know the county's here. Now you can ask us for what you need. And now it's our turn to vote. Thank you.
I came in tonight on the side of what I wanted to do on this. And so I thank you all for your comments. And I thank Commissioner Block for his reminder of all the things that have happened since he's been on the board. I got out of the board towards the end of the inexcusably bad response of the county's reelection. I certainly think they should get a raise. I've had a very hard time with such a large increase in one year, which I have told all of them equally. I predicted that we would have a long debate about this when I first sat down with the budget back in February, January. I, I think I could get to 28, but I certainly think the 20 is too low. And I think based on what we were just removing, all the work that they've done, what a huge turnaround it's been. I don't know, maybe you guys have had to do that as selectmen in your communities to do that kind of a turnaround. I'm happy to say Norwell's never been in that bad a shape, but, I mean, the county was essentially bankrupt. The budget's now lower than it was, whatever, eight, 10 years ago. It's beyond anything we've had to do. I can also attest to the fact that the workup at the State House has been enormous, hugely time-consuming. I have gone along with that on fewer occasions to help testify. It is something beyond what we have to do as selectmen and as representatives of these things. So I'm gonna suggest that we vote no on 20,000 and consider a higher amount. So that's just my personal thing. I do think we're ready to vote. So... Was there a second motion? Yes, there was. Yes. Okay, so the motion is to increase the commissioner's salaries to 20,000. If you want it to be 20,000, vote yes. If you want it to be some other number, vote no. All right. Abington?
No.
Bridgewater?
Yes.
Brockton?
No.
Carver? No. Duxbury?
Yes.
Mr. George on your side? Palatex?
No.
Hanover?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Hingham? Kingston?
Yes.
Lakeville?
Yes.
Marion? Oh, sorry. Marshville?
No.
Annapoyset?
No.
Middleboro?
No.
Elmwood?
Yes.
Plumb?
Yes.
Plumbton? No. Rochester?
Yes.
Rockland?
Uh, no.
Sitewood?
Yes.
Wareham?
No.
Witten?
No.
The motion carries 46.43 to 44.89.
Okay. So as a result of having salaries of 20,000 rather than 28,000, we now have three times 8,000 or $24,000 that could be allocated to another budget line. And I'm going to make a motion that we appropriately put $24,000 additional dollars into the line item for legal services. There is a fair amount of litigation going on, and I just think that's a safe place to put it.
Second. Second to discussion.
Sure, yeah.
Just a question. I know we've lost our longtime county attorney. Just what's the process that's gonna go forward to replace that? Are we gonna save money, or are you...
County attorney's present.
I don't think I have a chance to answer this.
I didn't realize.
That's okay. I meant to point out that I look like I was a reporter in a small notebook. I mean, actually, I worked for Mark Hill Day for three years, so our office is still kind of carrying on with the commissioners right now. There are a lot of legal problems that are coming up, if you think that might be helpful. But for right now, things are kind of staying in the status quo. Just, I'm a female, and Mark's now a Superior Court Judge.
Come on up then.
Can you, um...
Can you jump to the floor? Now we have crowds, so...
I think my surplus, I mean, you're sitting back there instantaneously. I think we should go to OPEB or to the stabilization account. But you suggested legal fees. Can we have an update on all the lawsuits that are currently going on? What the county has going on, specifically the ones that between the county applicant and the county applicant, and we're all under the substrate transfer situation.
Madam Chair?
I think that's a matter of chat from you. If it's a pending matter, it's currently, I would discuss that in public.
I was going to tell you I'm not gonna discuss that in public. Per the advice of council, but it will work its way through the system, and you'll be updating when we're allowed to.
I'm gonna agree with Paul, this will be the first time tonight, on bringing it towards OPEB. I think that would be a more prudent measure. I know in that voice, if we put together, we put a fair amount of money aside, you know, it's actually 2.3 million right now. And something we should consider. But one thing that we, and I appreciate the generous donation to the recovery center, $5,000. I know in the town of Annapoyset, we have several recurring lines. We make donations to different organizations that we're part of. I would consider taking part in that and putting a line through regional services or somewhere within the budget if we can carve out another $5,000 or $7,500, possibly as recurring contributions to the recovery center on a regular basis. I'm not, it's not in the form of a motion, but I would just actually consider that.
So to put it towards the opioid entity who's making...
I would say as a county resource, I think, I can speak on behalf of other towns that have opioid issues within their communities. I think it would be relatively prudent to put aside a sum of money that would go to the recovery center as a contribution of the county, which is well within our right to do, as a county in our budget. I think it's the least we could do, since we have an unforeseen surplus for this year and most notably coming for next year based on budgets, so.
I just want to be sure I'm clear on what your ideas, so that everybody knows.
Give them money, take it away from the 28,000, you should put it towards legal.
So you would put... I'm sorry.
So the deputy treasurer has just informed me, thank you, sir. I've been really loud tonight, by the way. Under net, 99 special accounts, line 15, human services, to add a line within that for the recovery center.
And so how much? You would want to do the whole $24,000?
I wouldn't say the whole 20, I think I said 20 before. I wouldn't say the whole 24. I would look at 7,500, $5,000. So we leave it up to the advisory board to discuss further, since it's your motion. Madam Chair, you could amend that, so.
I would like, and I'm sorry to put myself in this position, but I think I have a chance to think about it ahead of time. $39,000 towards the OPEB liability specifically is kind of a drop in the bucket, as most of you have probably learned. The best way to address your OPEB liability is to bring it down by negotiating changes in what you're promising for your retirees, as opposed to throwing, you know, thousands of dollars at multi-millions of dollars. So my perspective is we wouldn't get a lot of bang for our buck putting it there, which doesn't mean I object to it being somewhere other than legal, but I don't think we'd get much bang for our buck out of that. I like your idea more. That's just my personal thing.
If you have a comment? We just did a transfer of this fiscal year, correcting some, in that, some, you know, ups and downs of the current budget. We're obviously out of balance here by $24,000 even. I don't think it really matters where you put it. If we don't have the legal challenges, we're not gonna spend it. And we'll be correcting it at the next meeting where it's before you. If you, you know, put it somewhere specific like OPEB. We are on a funding schedule with OPEB, and we'll... That's enough to recapitulate all of it. It doesn't matter, you know, to me. We can put it in stabilization.
It's the principle behind it. It would be, I think, as a member community of the county, it would make a statement as a county to budget an allocation, or budget some sort of allocation that goes towards something that is quite simply something that's very dear and dear to a lot of hearts of people in this room. And this room, I agree.
This commissioner would request it go into stabilization.
Okay, so the motion is to increase the commissioner's salaries to 20,000. So if you want it to be 20,000, vote yes. If you want it to be some other number, vote no. All right. Abington?
No.
Bridgewater?
Yes.
Brockton?
No.
Carver? No. Duxbury?
Yes.
Mr. George on your side? Palatex?
No.
Hanover?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Hingham? Kingston?
Yes.
Lakeville?
Yes.
Marion? Oh, sorry. Marshville?
No.
Annapoyset?
No.
Middleboro?
No.
Elmwood?
Yes.
Plumb?
Yes.
Plumbton?
No.
Rochester?
Yes.
Rockland?
Uh, no.
Sitewood?
Yes.
Wareham?
No.
Witten?
No.
The motion carries 46.43 to 44.89.
Okay. So as a result of having salaries of 20,000 rather than 28,000, we now have three times 8,000 or $24,000 that could be allocated to another budget line. And I'm going to make a motion that we appropriately put $24,000 additional dollars into the line item for legal services. There is a fair amount of litigation going on, and I just think that's a safe place to put it.
Second. Second to discussion.
Sure, yeah.
Just a question. I know we've lost our longtime county attorney. Just what's the process that's gonna go forward to replace that? Are we gonna save money, or are you... Does the county attorney's present?
I don't think I have a chance to answer this. I didn't realize. That's okay. I meant to point out that I look like I was a reporter in a small notebook. I mean, actually, I worked for Mark Hill Day for three years, so our office is still kind of carrying on with the commissioners right now. There are a lot of legal problems that are coming up, if you think that might be helpful. But for right now, things are kind of staying in the status quo. Just, I'm a female, and Mark's now a Superior Court Judge.
Come on up then. Can you jump to the floor? Now we have crowds, so...
I think my surplus, I mean, you're sitting back there instantaneously. I think we should go to OPEB or to the stabilization account. But you suggested legal fees. Can we have an update on all the lawsuits that are currently going on? What the county has going on, specifically the ones that between the county applicant and the county applicant, and we're all under the substrate transfer situation.
Madam Chair?
I think that's a matter of chat from you. If it's a pending matter, it's currently, I would discuss that in public.
I was going to tell you I'm not gonna discuss that in public. Per the advice of council, but it will work its way through the system, and you'll be updated when we're allowed to.
I'm gonna agree with Paul, which will be the first time tonight, on putting it towards OPEB. I think that would be a more prudent measure. I know in that voice, if we put together, we put a fair amount of money aside, you know, it's actually 2.3 million right now. And something we should consider. But one thing that we, and I appreciate the generous donation to the recovery center, $5,000. I know in the town of Annapoyset, we have several recurring lines. We make donations to different organizations that we're part of. I would consider taking part in that and putting a line through regional services or somewhere within the budget if we can carve out another $5,000 or $7,500, possibly as recurring contributions to the recovery center on a regular basis. I'm not, it's not in the form of a motion, but I would just actually consider that.
So to put it towards the opioid entity who's making...
I would say as a county resource, I think, I can speak on behalf of other towns that have had opioid issues within their communities. I think it would be relatively prudent to put aside a sum of money that would go to the recovery center as a contribution of the county, which is well within our right to do, as a county in our budget. I think it's the least we could do, since we have an unforeseen surplus for this year and most notably coming for next year based on budgets, so.
I just want to be sure I'm clear on what your ideas, so that everybody knows.
Give them money, take it away from the 28,000, you should put it towards legal.
So you would put... I'm sorry.
So the deputy treasurer has just informed me, thank you, sir. I've been really loud tonight, by the way. Under net, 99 special accounts, line 15, human services, to add a line within that for the recovery center.
And so how much? You would want to do the whole 24,000?
I wouldn't say the whole 20, I think I said 20 before. I wouldn't say the whole 24. I would look at 7,500, $5,000. So we leave it up to the advisory board to discuss further, since it's your motion. Madam Chair, you could amend that, so.
I would like, and I'm sorry to put myself in this position, but I think I have a chance to think about it ahead of time. $39,000 towards the OPEB liability specifically is kind of a drop in the bucket, as most of you have probably learned. The best way to address your OPEB liability is to bring it down by negotiating changes in what you're promising for your retirees, as opposed to throwing, you know, thousands of dollars at multi-millions of dollars. So my perspective is we wouldn't get a lot of bang for our buck putting it there, which doesn't mean I object to it being somewhere other than legal, but I don't think we'd get much bang for our buck out of that. I like your idea more. That's just my personal thing. The commissioners have a follow-up.
If you have a comment? We just did a transfer of this fiscal year, correcting some, in that, some, you know, ups and downs of the current budget. We're obviously out of balance here by $24,000 even. I don't think it really matters where you put it. If we don't have the legal challenges, we're not gonna spend it. And we'll be correcting it at the next meeting where it's before you. If you, you know, put it somewhere specific like OPEB. We are on a funding schedule with OPEB, and we'll... That's enough to recapitulate all of it. It doesn't matter, you know, to me. We can put it in stabilization.
It's the principle behind it. It would be, I think, as a member community of the county, it would make a statement as a county to budget an allocation, or budget some sort of allocation that goes towards something that is quite simply something that's very dear and dear to a lot of hearts of people in this room. And this room, I agree.
This commissioner would request it go into stabilization, which requires a two-thirds vote to go in and a two-thirds vote to go out. And I request that, because we're trying to get to a 10% of our total budget in stabilization.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification from council?
Yeah.
Is it a two-thirds vote for us to put money in stabilization or just to get it out?
A two-thirds in.
Is two-thirds out, too, or are two-thirds in?
Two-thirds out. Is it both in and out?
I'm just talking about in, because it's under the community modernization bill for communities, it's not two-thirds in and two-thirds out, probably. But you never know what the idea from it is.
The stabilization is two-thirds in.
Yes. Make a motion that we put the money in stabilization, so $20,000?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, so you could do a motion to amend, and then continue for that.
I make a motion that we amend the motion to place the money in stabilization accounts.
Second.
Put $24,000 in stabilization. That would give you more flexibility if you want to take it out of the league, you can put it around if you need.
We need your permission to do so.
Yes, but it's still...
Second to discussion.
Okay, so we have different proposals out here. One is mine is to put it legal. We have one to put 7,500 of the $24,000 into the opioid, additional money to the opioid recovery center. We have a proposal to put all $24,000 into stabilization. I realize that's not, it's not all the actions that we're doing, but just to sort of complete the discussion, who else would like to speak to the ideas of what to do? Oh, and we had OPEB as one of several ideas that Plymouth...
I just want to echo what the gentleman had said in support of the 7,500 towards the recovery center as a line item. As a community, anybody in this room has either suffered from addiction, or family members, or known people, you'll know that there's not a more devastating thing to our community. If we join together and make it a priority, I think it sends a tremendous message. I would put the rest of it in stabilization.
Okay. Yes.
Just, I want to make sure that expectations are set properly. So recently, Barstool's gone through an audit process for, process around, just not the financials, but process overall. And one of the things that were called out by the auditor bump from the state was the process for giving to nonprofits as a procurement measure. So at below $10,000, we have best practices. Above $10,000 involves actually procuring it. So we just have to be careful if everybody thinks that we can give that money to Plymouth Recovery Center, we'd have to go through a proper procurement first.
Would we, if we were to do 7,500, we should...
commissioners as to how much they can, um, give out without having to go to procurement. So instead of perhaps naming, um, the, the recovery center, you could perhaps say for contributions for, you know, charitable organizations.
Any doubt?
All right. Um, I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'll keep things a little simpler, um, so that we can then go to your motion. And if you would, in the, in the back there, if you, I'm sorry, I'm scared.
I can withdraw mine so we can, while it's clean?
Yes. All right. So we now have no motions on the floor for the 24,000 dollars. And, um, I guess I'm going to ask you for one point of clarification. If we were to do 7,500 to the opioid recovery center, would that mean we could only do another 2,500 to another charity without?
Without having to do a procurement measure.
Okay. So it's $10,000 combined, not $10,000?
It's per, it's per procurement. So if you're carrying to one, uh, we could give $9,999 to a group without, to use best practices.
Okay. Could we do that to 10 groups?
Yes, we could.
Each for under $10,000?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted that to be clear. So, um.
Madam Chair? As a point of clarification?
Yes.
The motion is for 7,500.
Right now, there's no motion. Uh, they were both, the, the original motion and the amendments to the motion were both withdrawn so we could get something clean on the table that reflects the conversation. Did you want to make a motion? No.
I can, so we can give you the exact number.
Okay. So conceptually, do you want to do all stabilization, or do you want to do 7,500?
No. What do you want for the 7,500? And the downs?
$16,000.
$16,500. To stabilization. So I make a motion that we donate 7,500 to the opioid and transfer $16,005 to the stabilization fund. Can I just, is that math right?
No. I would do 4,400 to the national motion.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. So let's withdraw that.
All right, I'll withdraw that.
Okay. So we're going to start with the 7,500, but I think that needs to be worded for a line item, or how does that need to be worded? Council, can you say?
Council? Sorry.
So we're going to do a motion on the 7,500.
Do we want to do opioid recovery?
Yeah, I would do two separate motions. First, 7,500.
How do we have it worded? Can it be specifically to the opioid recovery?
If that's what the, the body would, um.
And then they can put it in the correct account? Or do we need to put it in a specific account? Mr. Treasurer?
Well, they're debating that. I've just gone through a lot of weeks of audits, and the auditors recommend against this type of direct contribution. Council just said, right. If you're, you're intent on giving it to a charitable organization, I would just put it into the special account, uh, and then leave that to the process. I wouldn't designate it to a particular entity at this point in time. Um, there is going to have to be a grant review process. I know the administrator's looking into that. I just think it sets a bad precedent and causes more challenges than I think we're looking for.
So I would do 7,500 to the special.
Just put it into special. Yes.
Okay. I made a motion that we transfer $7,500 to line item 15 general human services.
So you're second.
Right.
Any further discussion? Karen Knott, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries unanimous. All right. Now that we've set the amount in each budget line, we actually need to do one, one vote that's for the total budget. For some, for you to, um, tell me what you think.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, do you still need to do Department Three as a whole first? Because you've, you've now set a particular line item. You've put the additional monies elsewhere, but you need to do that department and then the overall vote. So you just need a motion in front of the body to approve Department Three as amended.
We do, you have?
You have not.
We did.
You're sidetracked by a number of amendments.
We did the amendment.
All right. So we need to take 24,000 out of the commissioner's office line, which brings it to $308,642.80. Do I hear a motion to?
Second.
All in?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, that motion carries. So we now have an amended budget? Is everyone clear what it is? Say yes. Yes, yes, okay. Okay.
You need a budget? Do you need a vote on the whole budget, Dan?
Yeah, I've got a motion. Um, do I hear a motion to provide for the maintenance of the county implement, departments, boards, and commissions, institutions, and sundry other services for certain improvements of the district departments of Massachusetts general law regulating the explosion of county tons, and the approval thereof took three years, July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, as previously voted and multiple votes by the side.
Second.
Discussion. Karen Knott, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we need to go back and do our, um, do our 64, Chapter 64 D vote. No, we didn't have the right dollar. We had to amend it, but it's somewhat an idea. So, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the amount of $1,260,000 and no cents representing the county's 60% of the 10.65% of the exact science tax revenue, which will be generated according to Chapter 64, as shown in the total figure for the operation of the county implement, fiscal year July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018.
Second.
Discussion. 1,200, 1,260,000.
1,260.
260. I have a motion, second, and further discussion. Karen Knott, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We carry unanimous votes. I undertake a motion to approve the amount of $840,000 and no cents representing the registered any 40%, 10.65% of the exact science tax revenue, which will be generated according to Chapter 64, as shown in the total figure for the operation of the county implement, fiscal year July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018.
Second.
Discussion. Karen Knott, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries unanimous.
Motion adjourned.
Karen Knott, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for bearing this on. And the next one.